Okay, great. I call the order of the meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, 16th and Thursday, September 12th. Welcome, everyone. We'll stand and have a moment to talk of some Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilperson Neil Garrison.
I pledge allegiance. You are the United States of America. You are the first and foremost justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call the round, please?
Councilperson Azar. I'm sorry, Aller. Present. Councilperson Azar.
Me too.
Councilperson Carlson.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Councilperson Nasser.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Ader present, one is absent.
Thank you. For those in the audience, if you don't have an agenda and you'd like one, there are some up here on the front bench. It is our tradition to have up to 30 minutes of time for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. If you're here to speak on one of the items which is on the agenda, we ask that you wait until that item comes up. Please, if you do have an item, you must stick on state your name and your address before you speak. And let me hear your remarks to three minutes, please.
Donald Hyde, 1411 Papalo Street. I'm going to keep it short today because we're late. I do want to remind you of one thing, all of you. The mayor, of course, is a laugh, but he knows. This now is the last meeting that this city council will have as far as public meetings. Well, apparently, there's a couple more public meetings you guys are going to have over the budget. But as far as city meetings, for the month of September, the next time you'll meet in public, it'll be October. You'll have two meetings then, and I'm not sure when the election falls, if you're going to have a third meeting before the election. I'm not sure. It might be. My point's simply this: You're running out of time to inform the voters of what is going on in Terre Haute. This, as far as I'm concerned, and I can't believe that most of the Americans, most of the people living in the city and the county don't know this, this is going to be one of the most expensive 30, 40 years that we've had in 40 years, period. No questions about it. And yet, I don't see the county council helping inform the public on why we're building the jail, how we're going to build the jail, how we're going to correct the problems that got us in trouble with the federal government.
Mr. Hyde, I think you need to speak to the county council about that.
All right. Well, no, but my point is this: I went to that meeting, and I'm telling you that they informed nobody of anything. Therefore, the city is the same way. We're going to spend a great deal of money, not as much as the county is, thank God, but we're going to spend a lot. Plus, we're coming up on something that's going to come in, well, we're going to build, first of all, we're going to build a convention center. We didn't take a vote on it. We're just going to do it. And you kept the price down. I have to admit, with the remodeling of ISU's convention center, they'll be able to hold the big stuff, and there is room for a smaller convention center-sized thing where they could make things go. So I'm not saying I'm completely against that. I'm still on the fence, one way or the other. But I had not seen this city council, or the mayor, discuss to the city public at large, generally, especially, why we need it, why we should have it, and how we're going to do it, and what we're going to do, and what we, the public, are going to get for this investment. And I mean this: I think this, the one point I really have a problem with this. You're taking money from the city in the millions, 10, 15 million. You're taking money from the county, but again, county and city, but still taxpayer money from everybody pays taxes. And it's all going to add up to about 25 million bucks, maybe it gets up around 30 million. When you put the finances in, it's going to be a little higher than that. What are we, the taxpayers, going to get for this investment? I think that there ought to be a city ordinance that makes this convention center hold at least three or four or five days during the year that's free, that the public, that they'll do something for the public that doesn't cost the public a dime, and show up, like for instance, December. You want to run a good Christmas egg, have the convention center once it's built, erect a Christmas tree, decorate the darn thing, do something, and then have a program in that convention center, let the taxpayers who have paid for this convention center actually get in it and see it, see what we paid for. I think that at the very least, this city council should pass a resolution, you guys can debate it, I don't know what the number would be, but there should be a few days out of the year, one in the spring, the summer, the fall, and winter, and I already told you what the winter and winter ought to be, where it's free, it's open to the public, because we have paid for it. Now, if it's a good deal, and we make money out of it, it helps our economy out, that's great. But if it's not a great deal, if it's like the golf courses, and I'm talking about both of them, where we're constantly keeping them going in a deficit, then the public ought to get something for the money we spent. I'm sorry, that's the way I look at it. Well, anyway, I just wanted to point that out. We're down to, you're down to three, to my knowledge, three, it might be, not actually three, for sure, two days, where you have a chance to inform the public of things that the city are doing. And thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on non-agenda items, on things that aren't on the agenda? Did you want to speak?
This is an open comment?
This is a comment on things that are not on our agenda, so if you're here to talk about anything that's on the agenda, it'll be later, but...
Oh, okay. My name's Kevin Southwood. I live over on Seventh Avenue. I've just got an idea I'd like to let you all think about. I call it Kevin's Will of Wonder. Of course, you know, I've told, I've said before, I want the zip line across the Wabash River, called Ride the River, but I would like to see a train out there that rides around the circumference of Deming Park. And I would say that if you had people, you might not even have to come up, you wouldn't have to come up with any money at all first. You just have people that they could make pledges, okay? I would say that you could have, like, if a person wanted to buy 25-foot of the railroad track that would be needed, or 50-foot of, they would get their name on a plaque, you know, they'd have to buy, like, the four-by-sixes on the railroad ties and the steel rail, but their names would be etched on that train out there, you know, long before, long after they're gone. But people could make a pledge, and if they don't have money, they could volunteer for labor on, you know. But, you know, you could have people that would make pledges to see if the idea has merit. I think it's a marvelous idea myself. But you could have, like, 10 or 15 different displays around the park. You would have, like, a castle. You would have, on the back ravine, on the back of Deming Park, you would have, like, a replica of the Golden Gate Bridge. You would have, like, the President's Monument head on there. You could have all types of stuff in history, you know, and you could call it, like, Deming Park, the Park of Art, you know. And, you know, there's a lot of people around here, like, arts and entertainment, or something like that. So they could help build, or they could help pledge money to build, you know, like, a 30-foot thing. The train would go underneath it, you know, like a castle. The drawbridge would come down, the train would go through it. But you could have, like, 10 or 15 different moments in history that would go around the circumference of the park, you know. And if you have something like, like, you're using the park property, but you make sure that 75% of that money that is generated by that has to feed the next project. That's why I call it the Will of Wonder, if you will. But for five years, it has to feed the next project. And then, if you get another project going, like, if you had, like, the zip line, or if you had the train, you know, if you wanted something else, it would continue for five years, it would feed the other projects, and it couldn't go to the general fund or anything like that. It would be like one spoke of a will would feed another spoke of a will, would feed another spoke of a will, and we could get some things done. And if you don't like my ideas, put up there on your website, of course, I don't get on computer, I would crash it, but if you would put up there, like, you offer, like, 30 or 40 things that people would like to see on Terre Haute, well, the highest three would be what we would try to get done. You know, if it costs less than a million dollars, it could be advanced a little bit quicker. If it costs more than a million dollars, it'd do it, it would come as people had to make pledges for the labor or for the money it would cost to do that. But, you know, if you have a mechanism of allowing people to help donate for stuff and help to give labor on projects, then you have, like, a generation of, like, enthusiasm by the public, you know, and it would also, it would be a lot more prudent for this thing that is voted for or is wanted. It's going to be a lot more chance of a success than a small thing here or a small thing here that only this group likes or that group likes. And they, all of them, are prone to failure after failure, you know, and, you know, so...
Thank you for your idea, Mr. Southwood. Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, then I think we'll move back to the agenda. Any questions to the journal?
There are none.
We've already spent time with the mayor tonight, so I don't think there are any more communications. Reports of city officials, again, some of you came in after the budget hearing, but we will have a public hearing on the budget on Monday, the 16th of September, at 5:30 PM in this room. So if you are interested in making a comment or asking a question about the budget, you are welcome to come at that time. We are going to have a short presentation from Kristy Howe from the Vigo County Public Library. So Kristy, I'm going to invite you forward at this point.
Okay.
And welcome.
Okay. Well, as you said, I'm Kristy Howe, and the director of the Vigo County Public Library. I came and spoke to you in the spring and shared with you our 2019 to 2023 strategic plan, at least that was back in March. And we discussed a little bit at the time that it would be nice if we had semi-regular contact with each other, even though you're a city body and the library serves the county. You know, more than 60,000 of the folks that we serve are your constituents, so we're working toward many of the same ends. So I wanted to come back tonight and provide you with some updates on just a few things. I have three main issues that I want to speak to tonight. The first one is the library budget. I know that you are a city council that's responsible for a city budget, and we have our own fiscal body, but we are levying taxes on many of the same residents and working collaboratively to provide many services. So I did just want to provide you with the brief update that the library has a balanced budget for 2020. We have a very small debt service budget. We have three payments left on a bond that we took out a few years ago, so we'll complete that in the first half of 2021. Our budget is within the guidelines provided for public libraries and other entities such as yourself by the Department of Local Government Finance, and if we step outside any of those guidelines, our budget automatically goes to the county council for their purview. So we are within the guidelines of DLGF. We had our public hearing last week, and the library board is set to adopt our 2020 budget next week. So we're right on track. We have a budget that, as I said, is balanced, provides for operations, as well as continued effort towards our strategic goals and objectives. Okay? The second item I wanted to talk to you about tonight is how we are working towards some of those strategic plan goals and objectives. I gave all of you a copy of that plan last spring, but I don't expect that you all had it with you tonight, so I sent a few extra copies out there at the tables if you need a quick refresher. Many of the things that we do at the library touch on multiple goals and objectives, you know, simultaneously. But what I really wanted to focus on tonight are the objectives outlined under Goal One. Goal One is to generate positive change in the community, and those objectives include demonstrating the power of collaboration, right, when we work together, championing positive civic engagement, as well as building and supporting a positive community image. So this fall, we're undertaking something a little bit different for the library, and that is a focus on leadership. So in the white envelope that I provided for you is a leadership brochure. It's an event guide of sorts, and this is covering the months of September, October, and November at the public library. Within the guide, you'll find some of the ongoing activities that the library conducts to support early literacy or technology training, things like that, computer classes, storytimes, book discussion clubs, things of that nature. But you will also find an entire series of initiatives that are focused around the concept of leadership. Leadership is something that we can begin exploring with children, but it's also something that really is an opportunity for all of us to grow in throughout our lifetimes. We are bringing in local experts and speakers, such as Camille Wallace and Dr. Clark Cowden, to provide programs and activities, but we are also looking back historically and evaluating and celebrating some of our, you know, local leaders through years past, such as Jane Sackelford, Eva Corr, and Birch By. So whether you're interested in, you know, history or developing your own leadership skills today, there's an option for you. We're also pursuing technology. We're watching and talking about different leadership TED Talks, so there are lots of different opportunities for people to connect. But more importantly, I think, from a timing standpoint, is that this fall is also a time when all of our community will be asked to weigh in on who they want their next leaders to be. And we think, as a public library, that one of the most important things we can do is encourage that positive dialogue and promote an engaged and an informed citizenship. So if you turn to page 20 in the leadership guide, that's where the section begins to focus on elections and voting. So we, and this leads me toward our third initiative, the third point I wanted to make tonight, which is, we're launching an initiative called Vote Vigo. This is something that we're doing in collaboration with the Vigo County Clerk's Office, and it is an effort to encourage voter participation, to encourage voter education. We want people to participate in the process, get engaged in their community, and feel well-equipped to visit the polls come Election Day. On Election Day itself, we will be providing updates from each of the voting centers throughout the county. We have 14 scheduled for the municipal election, where we will be providing updates on the wait times and the lines at each site. The library has been a voting center for a couple of years now, and we have provided those updates via the library's social media pages, and people have found it very helpful, and then, you know, thus we've received many questions, like, well, do you know what the line is like, you know, somewhere else? And we always felt a little bit bad that we didn't have that information, so we're working to be able to provide that for each voting center. Hopefully, this will help encourage people to get out and vote if they realize that they won't have to allocate a substantial amount of time to it. We know we have many in our community who must vote on the lunch hour or after work at 5:00 or 5:30, and with our polls closing at 6:00, that can be a narrow window. So hopefully, we can encourage people to take a look at how many folks are voting and what the lines are like at the voting centers throughout our community. So as a part of this packet, we're providing information, encouraging people to get registered. There's only a few weeks left for people to register to vote if they'd like to be eligible to participate this fall. We're providing information and opportunities for people to learn more about the issues they'll be facing on the ballot this year. The library, I want to stress, is a nonpartisan institution. We do not pick sides for political candidates or ballot measures, so we're simply providing information. We'll be hosting candidate forums for mayoral and city council positions. I'm sure we'll be seeing many of you at the library. And then we're working with the League of Women Voters and the American Democracy Project to provide information on both the casino question and the school funding question that will be on the ballot this fall, and thus encouraging all county residents to be ready to come out to the polls as well. So we'll be providing that information. We're hosting a mock election tomorrow at the library for those who might need to familiarize themselves with the voting equipment. We've been with our electronic equipment for a couple of rounds now, but there are still some folks who have not been exposed to it. We also know that the poll workers are going through a slightly different procedure than they have in elections past, so this provides an opportunity for residents to come out and take a look and ask questions, but also for the poll workers to kind of work through kinks in the new process and make sure that they're ready to go and be efficient on Voting Day as well. So what I would really encourage you to do is to be responsive when you start seeing Vote Vigo on social media. We're planning an entire rollout. There'll be media coverage, you know, advertising, all of those things. It's rolling out softly right now and is scheduled to start picking up next week so that we have the run-up to the election. But I think that in order for it to be successful, it will require word-of-mouth marketing and that kind of grassroots spreading of information, and many of you are active on social media yourselves, so if you are asked to like or promote something related to Vote Vigo, I hope you will consider doing that. As I said, it'll be a nonpartisan, you know, initiative to simply encourage voters to engage in the process. So I think those are the primary points I wanted to cover with you tonight, but I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Kristy, thank you for bringing this to us.
Sure.
Just two real quick accolades. When I, when this first came out of the envelope, I thought, oh, she bought a bunch of promotional material from somebody else. But it's an in-house publication.
That's correct.
It's the nicest publication I've ever seen out of the library, so...
Thank you.
Congratulations on that. And as far as the content of it goes, this Election Day Preparation Guide is probably the best graphic I've seen for that kind of information.
Thank you.
For people who are trying to figure out, well, what's the important thing in all of this, at least via the voting, and right now, it's the Monday, October 7th voter registration deadline, which is right there in the process.
It's our most pressing day, that's right.
Yeah. So anyway, thanks for the update, and I really appreciate you keeping us in the loop on what's happening with the library. And again, I'm in there at least once a week with my son, and often my wife, too, and we love our library, we really do.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I might use this opportunity also to just, you know, really make it clear for those who might be, you know, watching or listening, that the process of registering to vote is a very straightforward one, and it can be done electronically, online. The library staff are trained and ready to assist people if they have trouble, so we would like to encourage people to do that. And also, even if you are a registered voter or believe you are, we'd encourage you to check, because it's possible that you might have moved and not updated your address, or experienced some other type of activity that might make Election Day a little bit more challenging for you. So I would encourage everyone to go online and check that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming. I certainly echo everything that Todd said. I'm a big believer that we should make it as easy as possible for people to be well-informed about elections and to vote, and this certainly is a really great graphic and a great step forward. I might also say to people that if you can get to the library and get a copy of this, it also has the language for both of the referendums...
It does.
...so that when you get to the polls, you'll actually know what those say, and I think it's easier to vote on those things if you've already read them before.
Absolutely, yeah. And I would add that the event guide is available online as well, of course, so, you know, if you come to the library, you can pick up the, you know, slick printed version, but there's also, you know, a file on the library's website, so for those who are unable to visit us, they can access that online if they have internet access.
Well, thanks for this leadership in our community. Okay. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you, and thanks to those of you who are participating in our banned books feature as well, so we'll be enjoying that later in September, so thank you.
Thank you. Any reports from the Board of Public Works?
There are none.
Any reports in the standing committees?
I believe Mr. Elliott has his hand up.
Yes, correct.
I have two reports for you. I provided similar reports at the end of June 30th, a year ago. We'll talk about the short one first, the general fund, six months ended, June 30, 2019 and 2018. If you go to the schedule, the second page, you'll see the revenue for the general fund, 17.4 million versus 15.7 million a year ago, a million, $700,000 difference, and the components of that revenue increase are explained in the middle section of that schedule. Once you primarily received $2 million of pilot in the first six months of '19 that we did not receive in the first six months of '18. So that's the major change in the revenue. The expenses, 15.8 versus 15.6, are about $300,000 more, and I summarize those, $300,000 on a 15.6 million dollar numbers, a pretty insignificant change. So our June 30 cash balance of the general fund, you know, is going to be higher, you know, if you compare it to the prior year, just because of the timing of the $2 million of the pilot payments. So any questions on that schedule now or later? Let me know. The next page, or the next report, is the cash balance summary. It's a little bit more significant report, page and a half of commentary, followed by the schedule of cash balances, where I updated, adding the June 30, 2019, and then a schedule concerning the short-term borrowing summary that's behind it. If you go directly to the cash balance summary and you fold that out, if you just kind of look across the total line to begin with, you'll see June 2013, positive 4.4 million; June 2015, negative 4.7 million; June 2016, negative 9 million; June 2017, the total reduced to negative 2.3 million; 2018, we were down to minus 252,000 in these funds, and then we blip back up to 2.3 million in June 30, '19, which was somewhat of a cause of concern for me. And the, if you want to look back at the memo on the first page, the significant fund balances that changed are the group health non-reverting. That deficit's 3.3 million versus 800,000 a year ago, or a $2.5 million change. I talked to the mayor about that several weeks ago when we got the June 30 statements, so I brought it up again at the earlier, our first meeting today, and we really need an explanation or need to know what the heck is going on with that fund, because that, you know, a $2.5 million increase to the negative in 12 months is just, I just don't understand. Of course, the, when we compare June 19 back to June 13, you know, the rainy day fund went away... four million; June 2015, negative four point seven million; June 2016, negative nine million; June 2017, the total reduced to negative two point three million; 2018, we were down to minus two hundred fifty-two thousand in these funds; and then we blip back up to two point three million in June 30, nineteen, which was somewhat of a cause of concern for me. And if you want to look back at the memo on the first page, the significant fund balances that changed are the group health non-reverting. That deficit's three point three million versus eight hundred thousand a year ago, or a two and a half million dollar change. I talked to the mayor about that several weeks ago when we got the June 30 statements. I brought it up again at our first meeting today, and we really need an explanation or need to know what the heck is going on with that fund. Because that, you know, two and a half million dollar increase to the negative in twelve months is just, I just don't understand. Of course, when we compare June 19 back to June 13, the rainy day fund went away as we transferred those balances out. The golf courses, their deficits have been last few years somewhat less, but they still have some significant deficit balances, but we know what those are about. The Parks Project Fund, the mayor talked about today during the prior meeting and how that money scratch has been used over a number of years. Now, the added fund took, it's nine hundred seventy-one thousand dollars lower than June 30, 2013, but I think that's a relatively normal fluctuation up and down in that fund balance based upon when the major expenditures occur. About two-thirds of the way down, the first page, I talk about the major swings in the total balances. June 30, 2013, we were at a positive four point four five seven. June 30, 2016, we were at a minus nine million. That's a thirteen point five million dollar swing to the negative. In June 30, 2013, the negative's been reduced to two point three million, so that means we improved by six point seven million, although we had a higher level of improvement at June 2018 than we're in now. I attribute the improvement to the state law change, how you have to account for the property tax cap and the budget process. You used to be able to count that in your cash balance, and they changed that so that you can't, and that's why we had that big seventeen eighty-two reduction of four or five million dollars in the general fund a couple of years ago. That's what brought that about. The next item was the control over redevelopment funds and the changes to control and the requirement of the formal borrowings arrangement between the city and the Department of Redevelopment. We've been through that about five times now. I think we all have our own opinions on that, but I think that's been a really positive change that we have to deal with that. I remember our first meeting and my first meeting in January 2016, when Gary Malone from UMBAL was here to talk to us about ways to increase revenue primarily. And after a number of months, this council did approve the trash fee, and that's provided a significant amount of revenue already over the years, probably about the amount that our total cash balances have improved. And then the fourth item I could think of is I think there's just a lot more attention paid at budget time, to all the budget schedules by the administration and then by council to make sure we're going to have surpluses for the year that are sufficient to help us reduce our short-term borrowings and then eventually create the surpluses that we want to see. I keep asking, I've probably asked about the Comprehensive Financial Plan three or four times in the last six months, and I know I'm not the only one that's asked from conversations that I've had, and I hope we get it. I think it's a very useful document for us. And then the last schedule that I have is the short-term borrowing summary. In early 2018, we were at a nine million dollar total. That's the last page. And you see that with the twelve thirty-one seventeen balance of the DOR, the five million plus the borrowing and tax anticipation warrant loans of four million. That's where I get the nine million dollars. And then that was reduced later in the year when the DOR loan was reduced from five million to two million. But to take the two million, we still had the tax anticipation borrowing, so that's when we reduced that to six. And if you drop on down to where I think we are today, we're at the balance, six thirty nineteen, a three and a half million on the TAW loan plus a million on the DOR loan, or we're at four and a half million. So we've cut that in half. I can't remember if it was Councilman Gurus or Councilman Nation asked the mayor what that's going to be going forward. I think it was Councilman Nation, and we'll have that discussion as the budget process continues here this month.
I suspect we'll have that discussion a few times a year for the next few years.
But that's really the way that the revenue flows, that our expense flows, it's really the, you've got to get through six months or get six months of financial statements before you really have anything that should be reasonably comparable to the prior year because of some of the timing issues. And that's why I stopped and put this together and looked at this, and that, for me, provides some framework for going into expensive funds. Any questions on the second step of documents? Thanks.
Earl, this is remarkably helpful. Thank you, as always, for doing this and putting it together and giving it to us. Really appreciate it.
Well, it's got now, all I have to do is update, add one more column, and my staff can actually do some of that for me, so I'm fortunate and we're happy to help.
Thanks.
Keep this rolling and keep us informed of where we are. So.
Thank you, Earl. That's, I echo what Todd says again, but I also, it's always clear to me how helpful it is, but particularly this last line there, that's something we really want to keep our eyes on. And had you not put this together, I'm not sure we would have seen it that way, so I really appreciate that. Any other comments or questions, Earl? Thank you. If I can find my agenda again, we'll move on. Thank you. Thanks. Do you have any reports from non-standing committees?
We do not.
Items previously taken.
Resolution 11, 2019, designating an area commonly identified within Taraho, Indiana, as 2028 South 63 Taraho, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area for the purpose of an eight-year real property tax abatement, 200 South 6 LLC. This is for adoption.
Petitioner.
Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shaglin. I'm here tonight for the petitioner. As you may recall, this is the YMCA project. That's why I refer to it as the old YMCA project. I have with me Kevin McDonald. He's going to go through some information. We were going to do a PowerPoint. Unfortunately, I didn't get to Michelle in time to get the projector here, so we can just print it out for you, and that's what's in front of you. And I also passed out a sheet of paper with some vendors that I'll go through a little later, but.
Thanks, Richard, and thanks for having me tonight. Again, I'm Kevin McDonald, Vice President of Development for the Commonwealth Companies. Nice to see you all again, and thanks for the opportunity to present our proposal for the historic YMCA and the eight-year tax abatement. As you can see, I included just one of the pictures of the current condition of the historic YMCA. That is just one of the areas that looks just like that. The entire third floor of the building looks just like this. So it's in very rough shape, and I'm not sure how it's going to last another winter. So I really hope everyone gives us really strong consideration tonight. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on who Commonwealth is. I've been here before, gone through that, but in short, we have a long history of success developing affordable housing and working on similar projects, challenging projects that need to put together a number of different financial resources to build a capital stack to make a project like this possible. Next is history of success. Again, probably touched on most of this in some of our previous meetings. We have a long history of success, including working in the state of Indiana, and I think our proven track record just gives the community the reassurance that they need that we are going to develop a high-quality apartment project that everyone in this room will take pride in. And we are committed to being a long-term partner with the communities that we work with. We've never sold a project that we've developed, and we want to be a long-term partner with the city of Taraho for a long time. So next, just getting into the eight-year abatement. Got the base case scenario, which I want to point out is somewhat flawed because it doesn't take into account the current assessed value of this property. So our estimated assessed value is the 1.1 that we've talked about in previous meetings. And so looking at that, that's this graph here, where total tax abated would be one hundred and eighteen thousand. Taxes paid would be one hundred and fifty-four thousand under those projections. So, and then kind of stepping back, well, and I think it's important to note that the tax abated of one hundred and eighteen thousand equates to a quarter per resident per year as the commitment that that would equate to. Again, we heard issues regarding the ten-year abatement, and we heard those loud and clear. We were requesting bonus points based on the merit of it being a historic building, ten most endangered, and I get it, it opens the Pandora's Box, and as was stated by multiple council members. So respectfully, we went back, looked at it, and we were able to find another grant source to fill the gap. So we're here today requesting the eight-year and hope you give it strong consideration. Moving on to the next slide is the reality as of today. The last assessment was just over a million dollars, which means that the increment on our project is projected to be at about a hundred thousand dollars. I do want to point out that for many, many years prior, the assessed value of the current building was two hundred thousand dollars, and I think many appraisers would question how it went from two hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars, considering the condition of the building has gotten far worse. However, with that said, the reality is it's assessed at a million dollars. So this exhibit shows you what the reality is as of today, what the eight-year abatement would produce, and based on our estimated projections of what the property tax value would. The total abatement for the eight-year abatement would be ten thousand dollars over the eight-year time period. That is two pennies per resident per year, is what the commitment would be. And then moving on, I talked a little bit about this, so I don't want to talk a ton about this, but I just wanted to visualize for you what the income limits are for the housing tax credit program. So for a one-person household, it's thirty-six thousand dollars a year; two-person, forty-one thousand; and up to a five-person household would be fifty-five thousand dollars a year. Rent limits for a one-bedroom is nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars; for a two-bedroom is eleven hundred dollars; and for a three-bedroom, it's thirteen hundred dollars. You do have to keep in mind that there's a utility allowance that takes that down, so you can't really charge nine hundred and sixty dollars because you have to take out utilities. So usually that's about a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars per month, sometimes up to two hundred, depending on what utilities are being paid and how high costs of utilities are in a community. Next, examples of housing tax credit jobs, who are the residents that are living in the developments? We heard at the last meeting that we were tabled at, from the school district, Dr. Hayworth was talking about the need for teachers and how hard it is to find teachers in this community. I believe he said the salary for a teacher was thirty-five thousand dollars per year. And looking on, searching it locally, I saw there were a few examples of postings that were right around that level. So that, obviously, in a one-person household, the teacher is qualified to live in the development we're talking about. That is a huge need across the country. There are developments that are being built solely for teachers, and there are developments in the state of Indiana that are being solely for teachers, so there's a big push for this. It's a huge need, and obviously, we need quality teachers in our communities to make those straw. I've got quite a few other examples, locally, bus drivers, these are all postings that I found on Indeed or other job postings that are available on the internet. Administrative assistants, custodians, medical assistants, insurance coders. And I think it's important to note that many of the employees that will be working at the convention center, the casino, our neighbors in the library, and what a great neighbor to have for an affordable housing project, to have the library right next to us, is such a great resource for our residents to learn and better themselves and have a great resource for their children. The list goes on and on. Seniors on a fixed income, another great example of who lives in affordable housing. About twenty-five percent of our entire portfolio is seniors, and we expect nothing different here in Taraho. Just moving on to the development concept. Unfortunately, I didn't have a nice, pretty copy for you, but I think most of you get the picture by now. So we're preserving the historic building as it is and bringing it back to how it once was. Was thirty-four units with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. We're utilizing historic tax credits to preserve the building, which I'm sure Tommy will talk quite a bit about after me. We'll have an onsite property management office, exercise room, and community room with computers. And then we will have the six-unit new construction, three-bedroom townhouse units on the southeast corner, or, excuse me, southwest corner of the site. Provided a few different examples of projects we've done throughout the state. The first is Historic Blue Bell Lofts. I wanted you guys to see actual examples of the quality of these developments. So Historic Blue Bell Lofts is in Columbia City. It's an old blue jean factory. We used the exact same resources that we'd be utilizing. For this development, involves both housing tax credits and historic tax credits. Next is Garden View Apartments. This project's in Elkhart. It's a fifty-five unit development, again, using the same resources, and again, both in the heart of the community. Little Crow Lofts, which I mentioned a little bit previously in Warsaw, it's a forty-two unit development using, again, both housing and historic tax credits. So you can see the quality of these projects. I know, once it's done, all of you will take pride in it and see for yourself. So I hope you do give it strong consideration. So what are the benefits to the community? I think with the small requests that we're asking for today, the benefits far outweigh any potential negatives. This project is going to be ready to break ground in November, and we really hope you allow us to do that. You know, the demand for affordable housing... You know, the demand for affordable housing is huge in this community. We've seen it in newspaper articles that have been published locally. We see it across the state, but we know it's here. We have a market study that was completed by Mitchell Market Study Analysts. They're one of the experts in the state doing affordable housing market studies. The capture rate is 1.6% or less for all the units. That means there is a huge demand. Anything less than 5% capture rate means there's a strong, strong demand. So it means we have to capture just 1.6% or less than the households that live in this community in order to have a successful development. That's pretty easy to do. It means there's not enough affordable housing in the community. You know, it's going to support the vitality of downtown. Obviously, the additional residents will support the many surrounding downtown businesses, local jobs, local partners. We're committed to using local subs. This process has sped up and created a lot of additional local subs that we've connected with, so I think it's going to be, turn out to be a huge benefit to the project and the community. Because of that, and because of the development, there's going to be millions of dollars put back into this community during construction, payment of the local subs, new hiring, construction employees frequenting the many surrounding downtown businesses, and obviously, the affordable housing that is going to be provided for the community. Next, as I've mentioned many times, it's going to save a severely dilated local and national historic landmark, which I hope no one in this room wants to lose. And finally, there is a huge commitment that has been provided through the award of federal housing tax credits and historic tax credits that equates to over $7 million in committed funds. And I don't want to see the community lose those valuable resources, which is, I promise you, the only way to save this building. So with that, well, you know, we want to bring this building back to what it once was. There's a picture of how this building was originally designed, and that's a postcard that was made, I believe shortly after the plans for this building came out. So I did want to identify Mark Tarr, who is a local boy and will be our site supervisor. Have him come up and maybe say a few words if he wants to.
Thank you. My name's Mark Tarr. I'm a native here. Some of you may remember me. I was born here, went to school here, raised my kids here. Don't hear, live here right now, but I'm a construction manager for Commonwealth, and I've done a couple of projects in Indiana, and I look forward to coming back here to Terre Haute and managing this project if we choose to approve. Be happy to ask any quick answer and questions if you have.
We'll have time for us to have questions in a little bit, so we'll let you finish your presentation first. Thank you.
So I do have to thank Mark. He came here out of his own free will. I asked him to come, but he's, you know, he's not getting paid to be here tonight, and he's here because, you know, he believes in this project, and, well, he's a good guy. So he raised, raised a good one.
Do you have any questions for Kevin, or do you want me to just keep going? Okay. So through the course of a few meetings and a few conversations, there's been some issues that have been brought up, and I'd like to go through those right now. First, one of the first ones out of the gate was there was some issues with a ten-year abatement, and Kevin kind of touched upon that. There was some, they were trying to maybe go a little too far on the bonus points. After listening to you, actually going back and listening to everybody, and listening to the comments on the eight-year abatement, and then finding some additional resources, hopefully, we were able to come back to you with an eight-year abatement. So we'd like to think that we heard you, we listened to you, and we're back with the eight-year abatement. The other issue was the, how to assess this property, the income approach versus the fair market value. And I thought about that quite a bit, and I, and I just, I think of it this way, if, if your accountant calls you and says, "We've looked at your, looked at your stuff for this year. We can either fire taxes under this way or this way." Both are legal, but one, you're going to save a bunch of money, and the other one, you're going to pay a bunch of money. And they're both legal, what would you do? You would take the, the approach that's most beneficial to you, and that's what Commonwealth's attempting to do with the income approach assessment. It's a tool that's granted by the government, and it's a tool they are trying to utilize to make this project work. You know, there was a question of jobs. There's going to be a full-time job for sure, and then one or two part-time jobs. You know, this is still a old building that's going to require a lot of maintenance. You're going to have 40 families living in this facility, the two facilities, and with that, things are going to break, things are going to need to be fixed, so it's, there's going to be an ongoing maintenance of this building. Early on, we provided a list of contractors who had reached out to Commonwealth, or at least a sample of them. And those early lists had some out-of-town people. And, you know, when a project, when a project like this starts, you know, there's, there's companies, all they do is look for, for these projects to begin, and then they start calling. Because a lot of this is public pressure, especially if they're going to tax credits. And once it's announced, the calls begin. And that list was a kind of representation of the people who have reached out saying, "I'd love to help you do this project." And as we discussed at the last meeting, when we tabled it, and I appreciate you allowing us the additional time, it has since gone out to bid. Bids came back, they were due last week, I believe, 27. And I've provided with you a list of the companies who are in the running for this work. And I say in the running because we, nothing's been signed yet. We are far from finalizing it. One thing, we don't know how this is going to go, we don't know how, well, and if this doesn't go, the TIF doesn't go, the whole thing falls apart. This, the tax payment, as Kevin pointed out, is a small piece of this. But if you look at this list, I personally was happy to see the success of our local vendors. You know, I, I mentioned, I think one of the first meetings, I kind of got on a soapbox a little bit, and I said, "Just concentrate on one number," and that's 40, 40 families. That's what this project's going to affect. 40 families are going to have quality housing at an affordable rate, 40. I wish this was a project of, you know, 1,000 units. Unfortunately, it's only 40. But this project's not going to just affect those 40 families. But looking at this list, you know, we have a, we have a lot of workers who have to travel, and a lot of that travel time's not covered. So they're driving an hour, two hours to a job unpaid to work and come back another two hours unpaid. And the toll that takes on a family, of being away from the family, think of the gains you miss of your kids, the dinners you miss. That's a huge toll. And if you look at this, this is, this represents people who are going to, for the next, you know, this is in a quick process, for a year, these people aren't going to have to worry about traveling. They're going to have a local job in their hometown, so they can be a part of their hometown and be a part of their families. To go through this, with the furniture and equipment lead company here locally has been, they've been working with them on finalizing the numbers. The cabinets, they are going to do that in-house. The electrical, Crown Electric, they've been working with Crown Electric to get their numbers in place. That's a good union contractor with IBW 725. And then with the plumbing, currently, BNS Plumbing and Frytag are working on numbers to get their, get them in line, and then at that point, one of those will be chosen. The demolition, Dennis Trucking is going back through the building again tomorrow to finalize the numbers and confirm for the demolition of the building. Dennis Trucking's a great local contractor with good roots in our, in our community. And then for the site utilities, earthwork, excavation, and trucking, once again, Dennis Trucking Incorporated. Those are great union, great jobs, great union jobs that'll be here locally, and those are several men and women who will get to work in their hometown and get to spend more time with their families than on the road. For the building materials, Builders First Source over on Margaret has been chosen to supply the materials. For the drywall framing, that's Stroke Construction, you probably driven by their office there on Poplar Street, across from the Opera Engineers, Health and Welfare Office, another union contractor. The flooring, Floor in America, it's a locally-owned business. Painting, Clear Choice Painting. HVAC, once again, BNS Plumbing and Frytag, Weinhardt are working on their numbers. For the supply of the drywall, insulation, and acoustics ceilings, that's LMW Supply, which is a local vendor. For the steel provider, Summit Steel, they're in Brazil, Indiana. The structural steel, that's Nisco Enterprises, which is another local. For the roofing and siding, that's Low Brothers. And for the appliances, Ace Supplyance. These are 20 or so local contractors, supply stores that are going to have, receive part of this $7 million of tax credit money that this project's going to receive, that's going to stay in our community. And when I say working on numbers, just to explain what that is, so I'm going to redo this room, and I prepare a set of plans, and I give them to Councilman Devine to bid on it. And he bids on it, but he comes back to me and says, "Listen, you've got four ceiling fans, you know, the model 17-4, you could get a," he comes back to me and says, "You could buy two of the next size up and save money, both on energy costs, on actual material and insulation." So when I say working on numbers, it's, the term is value engineering. They're working on trying to get those numbers down, which saves the project money, which is beneficial. So I, I hope that their efforts in working with our local vendors and contractors, you can see their commitment to our community, which goes along with their investment in our community. You know, we heard, we've heard a couple complaints about hurting values of this, this project. I, I think that was probably early on when there was kind of an unknown on the tenants of this facility. But I think, as you heard from Kevin tonight, you know, the, the potential tenants for this facility is the, the working family that now with this project is finally going to get a benefit, a benefit that you, that you ate can give them. You know, it's, I sit through a lot of these meetings, and I think of, I mean, how, how many times your actions actually truly benefit, I mean, it's unfortunate it's only 40 families, but this is a true benefit to those lucky 40 families that will be able to live in this facility. And I, and I don't, and so back to the hurting the values, the neighboring values, I, I would think our neighbor would love to have this building renovated and occupied. An empty building next to you is never good. It invites crime, it invites a lot of bad stuff, and just an empty deteriorating building doesn't help your, your value. So I, the, the hurting the va, this project, in my opinion, does not hurt the values of the neighbors. At one point, I heard, you know, "Is this the best use?" And it's hard to say whether or not there's a better use for this property out there. But what we do know is, for 13 years, this building sat empty. What we do know is other companies like Commonwealth have walked through that building looking for a project and had said, "No, thanks." And I think the first page of Kevin's presentation would probably give you a pretty good explanation of why. You know, this is not going to be an easy project. This is an old building that's sat empty for 13 years, and I would imagine the last four or five years of its occupancy by the Y, due to their financial position, not a lot of the necessary maintenance was done. So who's to say what they're walking into on this project? But thanks to Commonwealth and their willingness to reach out and contact these differentities and find this money, this could turn into a phenomenal project and asset to our community. I touched upon the contractor list. The, the tax abatement, again, I've sat through several meetings here, and I've sat through several tax abatement discussions. I've stood up here asking for tax abatements before, but I can't recall ever hearing of one that is asking for so little. Asking for so little for what we're getting in return. You know, is, admittedly, that the number of full-time jobs it's creating is not ideal, but what it's giving back as far as quality of life, is anybody keeping track on how many times I say 40 families? 40 families are going to have their lives changed forever. You know, you're all elected officials, and at some point, you've walked your district knocking on doors. You know the struggles our community faces in housing. This gives 40 families a safe, affordable place to live and raise their families. And I don't think you can put a, a price on the value of that for our community. The closer we can get is the $10,000 of the payment that we're, that if you were so willing would be giving to this community or to this project.
Well, I just, I would ask if you'd, think, you know, I feel like we have addressed...
Well, one last thing is, I've heard complaints about double, you know, they're getting tax credit money, they're asking for an abatement, they're getting some TIF money, they've applied for a facade grant through the state.
Sort of, you know, that's what these projects entail, making it work.
Whether it's, you know, the White House Mission, I mean, all of these projects require these different sources to make it work. different sources to make it work. And, you know, this is no different. And really, it's already been approved by this council for other similar type projects. So I just hope you take that in consideration. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, or if there's any new issues I have not addressed.
Okay. Well, I think we'll have a public comment on it first.
We have one more speaker.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. I was going to just speak separately, but I'll speak part of the presentation. My name's Tommy Kleckner. I'm Director of the Western Regional Office for Indiana Landmarks, a statewide nonprofit historic preservation organization. Western Regional Office is located at 669 Ohio Street in downtown Terre Haute. Indiana Landmarks is supportive of the proposed redevelopment of the historic YMCA building that the Commonwealth properties is bringing forward. It is going to see the preservation, the rehabilitation, and adaptive reuse of the significant landmark structure in Terre Haute for a use for which there is great need, there remains great need, and for the foreseeable future, there will be great need. As I shared in June, Indiana Landmarks in 2017 listed the historic YMCA building on our statewide 10 most endangered places list. The intention of doing that was to, to bring attention to the threat to the building through vacancy, that demolition by neglect, but also to raise awareness about the opportunity for its redevelopment. And we were extremely fortunate that Commonwealth companies discovered this opportunity at that time and has continued and persisted in trying to bring about a reused solution. Indiana Landmarks is also supportive of the resolution before you. The tax abatement that is being requested is an economic development and a tool that has been effectively used by this body, both current members and past members, to bring about significant investment throughout the community, particularly with larger scale housing developments. Whether it's market rates, like the River Lofts, the Historic American Can Company Building, which core redevelopment from Indianapolis came in, student housing, Tompkins Thrift with Ellis Place, a 500 block, and affordable housing, Terre Haute Housing Authority and its Warren Village. You've also provided that tax abatement for these projects and with Warren Village, it was a creation of a new for-profit entity to help facilitate the expanded development of that project. And so I urge you to look at the benefits, the merits of this proposal. You have the opportunity with this resolution to support preservation, to support affordable housing, the provision of more quality affordable housing. The intended residents of this project, this property are many of those that United Way has identified in its Alice Report. Those who are above the poverty level but continue to struggle to make enough money to be able to raise themselves to that point where homeownership is an opportunity. So the rehabilitated, adaptively reused YMCA building will see nearly $10 million invested in the historic building and infill development to provide that type of quality affordable housing. Qualified affordable housing provides assurances to those residents that their income levels will not penalize them with shifts in the housing market. It also provides opportunity for those with restricted incomes who may also face mental or physical challenges, the opportunity for independent living in quality affordable housing. And what is great about this project is it's in downtown. It brings affordable housing, quality affordable housing to downtown, providing greater diversity in housing options, but also a residential makeup. It also provides better inclusion of those seeking a quality housing opportunity. So I urge you to, again, consider the merits of this project, the opportunity to see nearly $10 million invested in an economic development project that is helping to meet a need that has been identified, not just in Terre Haute and View County, but throughout this country. Thank you.
Do you have anything else with your presentation? With that, we will turn to a comment by the public. So if you come to the microphone, please state your name and your address and then make your comments. Thank you.
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde. I heard his entire presentation and I'm one of the few people who can literally speak with not only knowledge, but life experience about what he was talking about. But besides that, I want to tell you eight people that you have a problem. Now, it's been empty for a lot of years and that's sad. I'll not deny that. And you have an opportunity and I'm not completely against this idea. The problem is that there is another opportunity coming up if you wait. An opportunity to give the building not only new life, but the life it once possessed. You're going to be told by him that these, there's 40 families, he can't name any of them, that will be helped. Well, based on what you guys are doing with your building this convention center and where you're building it, you're freeing up an opportunity to save the former YMCA and turn it back into what it once was. Instead of saving or helping out the 40 families, it would be more like 2,000 to 3,000 families at a time. It would make a real difference. It would put a big stitch in our safety net. Let me explain what I'm talking about. You're bought, when they, when they're going to build this convention center in downtown Terre Haute, right down 8th Street, 8th and Harmon, you're building, you're buying the old Harmon place that right now has a lot of the state and city and county charities, not charities, but people doing work for the government. And all those offices that are really nice, they are going to move because you're going to turn that into a hotel. So you've got about at least six really good offices that are going to have to move somewhere else. Let me be real clear on this. The reason that the YMCA building is so valuable has nothing to do with the condition of the building. It has everything to do with location, location, location. It's where it's located at. All those places that are currently in the building that you're going to make them all leave, every one of those, those organizations could come to the YMCA and rebuild the YMCA and continue their work and actually continue their work in a better place, allowing them to do better work than they're currently doing in the little cramped place they're in now. All I'm asking you to do is think about this, but more important than that, I'm asking you to look into it. I don't, I would, I'm not disagreeing with these people at all, but I think that there's more than one, right now, at this moment in time, there's more than one option for that building. And I believe that y'all look into it. I think y'all give it, give it a month, do your own research and see if indeed some of those businesses, those places, those government offices, they're going to move, no doubt about that, you're going to make them move, they're going to be evicted. The Harmon's already given notice. And by the way, that notice is coming up this fall. So sometime over the winter and into next spring, they're going to have to go somewhere else. Well, if you're willing to wait a few, you know, a season, they could possibly do exactly what this gentleman's saying. They could save that building and put it to use, but instead of putting it to use to help only 40 people, 40 families, it would help the county and the city of Terre Haute, not a few 40, more like 4,000 or more. And I worked at the YMCA and I'm telling you what, when in the heyday of the YMCA, that YMCA had at least 10,000 actual members that paid dues and the children and the families that we helped, yeah, it would be in the numbers of the 3,000 to 4,000, not taking my word, but look it up. I encourage you to look it up. And, you know, but I don't need to tell you that because you all know when the YMCA was at its best. If you go there, location, location, by the way, as far as those families, they're having, finding families with young children to live there, I'm not sure that I lived there at the YMCA. It was, it was all right, don't get me wrong, but it was for one person. When it comes to families, it would be like those little government houses off the, on South 4th Street. Real small, real nice, but you're living one person or maybe a married couple in there and you're really having trouble in the, the small area you're living in. And they're going to remodel that YMCA and put 40 separate houses in, you gotta go with size. I believe there's, that you need to look into what's going on, really, I'm serious about this. I believe money could be made, I believe money could rebuild that YMCA, fix it, not rebuild it, fix it. And it could do the job it once did before and give these organizations that are going to have to move a better place to do their work and better ability to do that work because that building really does. It was built for a purpose and that purpose could live again.
Hello, my name is Wendy Bennett. I live at 4519 Park Lane Court in Terre Haute, Indiana, have lived here for almost 40 years. And I am also the managing partner of Sarklass LLC, which is a rental company. And I am here because I object to my tax dollars being used to subsidize a private investor and making it an uneven playing field, especially at a time when you're asking us, the voters, to come up with more money to help our schools because they're in dire need of our support. And for an out-of-town company to take the money out of town, although now they say they have some local people working and on things, which is fine, I just don't think that we should be subsidizing it. And they're already supposedly getting over $500,000 from redevelopment. I think it's a bad precedent and I think that the project should stand on its own merit without getting a tax abatement. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public who would like to speak on this ordinance? Okay.
Richard, I had a few questions regarding the original proposal from 10-year to now where we're at with the eight-year. I remember at the first meeting, we were told as a council that that 10-year was needed for the federal tax credits. It had to be a 10-year, is what we were told.
That's, that's correct. At that time...
So is that true or...
At the time, we needed a 10-year abatement to get it through. But once it was determined that the 10-year wasn't going to go through, and Kevin may have some comments on this as well, going back, reevaluating with the eight, again, we went back, we listened to you that night, we went back and listened again, and through the facade, the state facades grant, that's going to help make up the difference on this project because it's not necessarily that the 10 is, I think Kevin's ready to go. It's not necessarily the fact that the 10 is so important as the abatement because, like I said...
But that's not what we were told.
But by mentioning that night, the abatement was necessary for this tax credit because they want to know that the community is invested in it. And they, they want the abatement. At the time, we thought the 10 was, was correct based upon the funding scenario. Again, that evening, the 10 wasn't appreciated, so they went back and looked at different funding models and then found additional funding and now the eight with the additional funding makes up that gap.
Well...
And the reason the 10 was stated was because at the time, they said their, their hopes was to get a 10-year abatement, which would, which would shore up the funding aspect. But Kevin can address that.
Me and you, me and you talked about this, Kevin. Go ahead.
I wasn't here at the first meeting. I did look back at the minutes, you know, it was stated that we needed a 10-year, which is true in some aspect. Yes, we can make it up if we find sources that made it up. Luckily, we found a source that's available through Oak Grove, their Historic Preservation Grant that can make up the difference.
So is it making up the difference of the two years or is it making up the difference so you can get the federal tax credits?
It'll make up the...
Because we were, I feel we were told that the federal tax credits and the 10-year tax abatement went hand in hand.
Yes, it's true. So we have to, whatever other sources that we came in with our application that we thought was committed to, we have the letters that we thought we were getting a 10-year tax abatement that was subject to council approval. Totally understand the 10-year number that was received was based on the assumption of what we thought we could get. We thought we qualified for a 10-year, was determined we didn't. So we qualified for actually a nine-year, we came back with an eight because we heard that was what could be supported. So, you know, that we have to deliver the amount of kind of non-Indiana housing and community development support from either the county, it could be from another state agency, we have to have those match dollars that is what was committed to in our application.
So for the two years, you found a match to cover the two years instead of the eight?
Correct.
So what if we were to do, amend this to do a six-year abatement? How would that change things?
Well, given the minimal amount of support, I think, you know, what IHCPA is going to be looking at is, you know, they want to see if the, the community provides a commitment on something that we get an abatement. If it's a six-year, that would probably work. I mean, we're only, we'd be talking about $1,300 of dollars abated, so I'm sure we can make up the $1,300 if it went to a six-year.
I, I'm being sarcastic when I say that. The reason why I'm asking is I, I think when people come to this council to ask for a tax abatement, I think there has to be some credibility on the developer's side. And, and, you know, I can honestly look back and I think that at the time, there were people on this council that was willing to do an eight-year amended and, and now I think some of that trust has been lost because we were told, or at least I feel we were told, that it had to be a 10-year and here we are three months later saying, oh, by the way, we can do eight-year.
And all I can say is, the meeting I was at, I know when I was asked that question, we'd have to find a way to make it up.
Okay.
And I apologize that someone else was here representing Commonwealth, that is on Commonwealth, but I'm here. At the time, it was, before the meeting that I came to, no one said anything about eight-year. When I got here, we were asked if it could be an eight-year and I said the truth, so...
Well, and I, I will say, this, this presentation is 100 times better than what we received previously, so I appreciate you taking the time to do this presentation. I did have a question with the income limits as well. Do you consider this to be affordable housing or low-income housing?
Affordable.
Okay. I think at the first meeting, it was sold as low-income housing. Do you feel that that's the case?
I'm not sure what, what would have led it to be believed that it was low-income housing.
I can answer. At the first meeting, as I recall, you know, we were careful because there was such a stigma attached to this that it was going to be unemployed, you know, maybe even a hut house, that we were careful, that I thought I was very careful in not saying low-income, that was affordable. It was actually long-term, I tried to use to avoid even, just to be even more safe.
Well, I, I think we discussed certain percentages, we're going to be a certain income level and others would be certain income levels on the rent and so forth. So, you know, I think a lot of people in the public felt like this was going to be low-income housing and not necessarily affordable housing. I mean, we could be splitting the hairs on that, I understand that, but...
Yeah, and, you know, this, the program in the state of Indiana was originally called the Low Income Housing Tax Better Program. They changed the name to the Rental Housing Tax Better Program because they realized, well, this is our workforce, these are the people that serve our community. that serve our community. It, it really should be called the Rental Housing Tax Credit Program. And that's when the state of Indiana decided to change it, the name to the Rental Housing Tax Credit Program. So maybe there was some confusion with that, I don't know. Again, I wasn't here.
Okay. I appreciate you answering those questions. I yield.
Did, did I hear from the earlier discussion that this has gone out for bid?
Correct.
Okay. Does that mean final drawings have been done?
Correct.
Okay. Who is the, the project owner? Is Commonwealth?
Correct.
Who will be the project operator going forward?
Like the property management company?
A management company that Commonwealth will hire?
Commonwealth, we have in-house property management.
So it'll be your in-house property managers?
Correct. So we'll hire a local property manager here.
Okay.
And then we have our, our regional managers that oversee the local-
Is that who your employee will be?
Yes.
Okay.
And a maintenance.
Okay. The total project cost, again, best estimate today?
The total project cost is about ten million.
Ten million. Okay. And the sources of the funds for that ten million? Seven million housing, low-income, section forty-two, I heard?
Most of, yeah. I think it's about eighty-five percent of the sources are either housing, housing and historic tax credits, and then there's a IHCD development fund loan, about five hundred thousand, that has an interest rate, it's a three percent interest, and then there's a-
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. The housing credits are worth seven million to the project? Or is it eighty-five percent of seven million?
It's eighty-five percent of the total project cost.
Okay. So eighty-five percent of total project cost is, is that, is the credits? The federal credits?
Yes.
And what's that amount expected to be? The eighty-five percent?
So if, so the housing tax credits are somewhere, the equity amount that comes in is somewhere over seven million. When you combine the historic tax credits well, they're combined to about eight point five million, which is where the eighty-five percent comes.
Eight million, five hundred thousand dollars related to credits?
Correct.
As the source, as the source of funds. Any idea what the appraised value of the project will be upon completion?
Um, well, the appraised value, well, it'll be higher than what the assessed value is, because the project, as I explained last time, a development that is, provides affordable housing cannot afford to pay what the market property tax would be. We would have negative cash flow every year. You can't physically get taxed at the rate of all the units for market-rate apartments. You would have negative cash flow every year, and the project is not feasible. There's a reason why the state of Indiana requires affordable housing tax credit projects to get taxed based on the income approach.
Okay. So who, who, Commonwealth will continue to own it after it's built, own it and operate it? Can you sell it?
No. We are locked in for fifteen years, or thirty years of affordability, as a fifteen-year tax credit compliance period.
So you can sell it after a certain period of time?
After a certain period of time, yes.
After how long?
Uh, we'd have to be in for fifteen years.
Can sell it after fifteen years?
Yes.
Okay. And the assessed value is how much, under the income, under the income approach?
Um, just over one point one million is the conservative approach.
So, and that was one million one, computed on the income approach, which the income is low based upon the nature of your project. The average annual property taxes for eight years, it looks like it's about, that you'll pay, is about nineteen thousand, three hundred dollars. If I take one fifty-four, one hundred fifty-four, four twelve, and divide by eight?
Sure.
If I'm looking at the right schedule?
Um, so it's more likely to be the, the second schedule, because that one takes into account the true increment, the two hundred and sixty-one thousand over the eight years?
Okay, explain that one to me.
Um, so we're only getting an abatement on the increments that we're producing. The property is currently assessed at just at one million, on that slide, one million, thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollars.
Okay, which, which page should I be looking at? They don't have pages.
If you have, there's two, there's two tax abatement, yeah, do I have numbers on here? Of course, they're not numbered, but there's two tax abatement schedules. The second one-
Ten thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents?
Yes, that one.
That's your projected total abated tax?
Correct.
So we've been here all this time talking about ten thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents?
Yes, that's a big, yeah, this is my number one slide of why this, is hopefully a no-brainer to get approved.
Okay. So explain the reason between the two schedules again.
Um, so the current assessed value, if you go on the county assessor's site, the assessed value of the property is one million, thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. Our income approach value is, on the previous page, the one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ten is our estimated assessed value. The difference between those two numbers is an assessed value of a hundred thousand, or a hundred thou-, one hundred thousand, nine hundred dollars. So that's the increment that we, the project would be producing. So the way that the tax abatement works, after talking with our local tax council, is that the abatement is only on the increments that we, the development will be producing.
The increment is, is what number?
One hundred thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Okay. But we already have, by state law, the income approach being the relevant approach?
Correct.
So we're, the communities are forced to live with that, that law?
Correct.
Okay. So then, two sixty-one divided by eight, that's thirty-seven thousand dollars a year then? Okay. Thirty thousand dollars on a ten million dollar investment, that's still a pretty good, pretty well effective amount of tax if you pay.
I, I wish we could pay more taxes, I really do, it'd make my job a lot easier coming up here. I, people come into these meetings and give false valuations on their projects because of that. I will not do that, you know. When I submit these documents, I know you guys are gonna look at that value and be like, oh, one point one, but I don't wanna come in here and lie to you and say our project can pay more than it can. I know there have been other projects that have come through this body with much larger numbers, and-
Okay. So they, I mean, this wasn't clear to us in any prior discussions?
I didn't realize until I looked at the, the, so Hoosiers, the state of Indiana has the Hoosiers website that is the tax abatement calculator. It doesn't anywhere prompt you to put in the current assessed value. And then I was talking to our tax council about another project, and I asked him the question, I'm like, is it just based on the increment that you're getting abated, or is it the new value? So we've had other, most of our other developments have been, well, not most, but some of them have been, the ones that we've gotten tax abatements on have been owned by nonprofits, so it didn't come into account, it wasn't getting taxed. So we were producing, the whole, the whole value was the increment. So in this example, the increment is obviously much different.
Okay. So this, this one page really isn't very relevant?
The first pa-, yeah, the first page isn't very relevant, the, the second page is the one that is relevant.
They've made a tax, ten million, four hundred sixty-six dollars, tax paid, two hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Correct.
That's your most relevant expectation at this point in time, or projection, I guess is the right word. Okay. I yield.
On the current assessment that you have on here, and then you have the, the assessment is an increase of one thousand, nine hundred dollars. This current assessment that's on here, that's just for the YMCA building, correct?
Um, it's, it's for the whole property.
Okay, but what you're saying, the current assessment is, is just for where the YMCA sits, not for the corner lot that you're gonna develop?
For both, both.
So for both parcels?
I'm pretty sure, unless you think it, you think it's more? You think it's just that, I, I don't really, today, I confirmed the number earlier today, it actually-
Both parcels?
But, it showed the value, the value of one thousand, thirty-four.
I'm sorry, Kevin, did you just say that both parcels have now been combined? How long has that been the case?
Um, it took about six months sometime. I know, engineered.
So this was current? You just, you just did this?
I just looked.
You know what year the, the combined was for, because I know everything's in the rear on taxes, even with combining properties. And it's still not showing on Beacon as being combined.
It's, um-
Because if you put it in, if you put it in for six months ago, then that could be for, what are we?
Yeah. On Beacon right now, if you go, at least on the desktop version, it appears to be combined to me.
Because I'm sure that this assessment is just for where the YMCA building sits, not including the lot that you're wanting to develop a new building on.
Do you mind if I look at what you're looking at?
I'm on the Beacon website.
Can I see it?
See, that's just for the YMCA.
That's the whole property. That's, that's the entire parcel. See, before, there was a, there was another line.
It's definitely in Commonwealth's interest to get this right, because if we're only talking about one of the parcels-
I had the floor asked-
I'm sorry, I yield.
Yes, so the, it does show that they're combined.
I yield.
It's in Commonwealth's interest to have both properties, well, if they are, if they are combined, it's in Commonwealth's interest to make sure that this number is right, whether it's combined or not, because they're asking for a tax abatement on both parcels, I think. If they inadvertently left one off, then we would only be considering one of the two parcels. Kevin, I'd just like to say again, thank you for your persistence on this. I appreciate the list of the fourteen local Terre Haute contractors who were under consideration for this work. And I echo the comment that's been made, not only in this meeting, but in previous meetings, that these properties sat vacant for thirteen years, and they had been looking for a developer like this, because this is the kind of development that makes sense. The programs that are available to affect a project like this have been used successfully in many other communities. You can see some of those projects in the presentation that Kevin gave us, been done by his company in Indiana. And I think that we are, I'll say it again, I think that we're lucky that Indiana Landmarks has brought this project to the attention, this potential project, to the attention of national players like Commonwealth, so that they can bring the expertise to leverage the tax credits from all these disparate sources and actually make it work. I, I, I try to fix old buildings, too. I've done a number of small-scale projects compared to this. I know how hard it is to find the funds to make these kinds of projects work. And I also know that there's a whole next level to doing it, and these guys are the next level, Commonwealth is. They're a company that is set up to do this kind of thing. So, I'll stop, I yield, but I, I thank you, my fellow council members, for your patience with us as we tried to get the, the number, the real numbers to you, and tried to get the real story across. I yield.
I, I mean, I have two different Beacon reports, that one of them's a million, oh, thirty-four, two hundred, that matches the number he uses, and another one's forty-eight thousand, eight hundred, which I think is, you know, the other one. I mean, there, right here. And I think that's, I think that's what Councilwoman Aller was trying to bring up.
Those are the old, there's one number now. If you look on the Beacon GIS, the outline goes all the way around the surrounding.
Well, man, I just, I just printed them both off at the same time, this summer.
No, it just got changed. Within the, it was within the last few months, it just got changed. So that Amy has the GIS pulled up, you can see the outline goes around both the building and the open green space to the south.
Earl, do you yield for Amy's comment?
Earl, I think I can clear something up real quick.
Okay. Earl?
Earl?
Is it okay if Amy makes comment?
I yield. Sorry.
When you can, when you, when you go into flat mapping and you, and you combine something, they automatically do the GIS right there. I mean, the GIS gets, the map gets done. But the assessment does not change, because taxes are a year in, taxes are a year in the rear. So those tax dollars have not gone in, the assessment has not gone in together, because if it was just done six months ago, it won't be done until either next tax year or the year after that, because of taxes being in the rear. So as it sits right now, the assessments that you're pulling on Beacon, you're seeing two different assessments, because one of them is for the YMCA building, and one of them is for the lot. I understand on the Beacon map, you're seeing it combined, but the tax dollars are not combined, and because taxes are in the rear, and they have to, you know, once it feeds through flat mapping, then it feeds through the assessor's office, then they have to roll the taxes over. It's a year in the rear. So even though it's on the flat map as one parcel now, because they've had it combined, the tax dollars are still sitting as two separate lots. So the assessment that, that the one's given, that's just for the YMCA building, and then you have another parcel for the land, even though if you look at Beacon, it's all as one now. But with taxes being in the rear, it takes a while. It's the same when you split out property. It'll show it split, because they've already done the mapping on the GIS. As far as tax dollars or assessments, those are a year in the rear. And depending on when it was split, because there's a cutoff date, it could be next year, it could be the year after, or it's somehow, you know, how the dates fall, it could be even the year after that, before you're gonna see that assessment, all be one. So.
That makes sense. Yep, I agree.
Any other comments?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, are all tax credits based on whether they have an abatement or not?
Um, it's based on local financing commitment, so.
No, I'm talking about any, anywhere, in order to get a tax credit, you have to have an abatement?
Not necessarily. So I think, you know, for example, the other local Mission, Mission, Light House Mission, excuse me, Miller Parrot, Miller Parrot building is the one I know it better as, but that development, instead of getting TIF- but that development, instead of getting TIF, they had home funds. But I think they got about the same amount of home dollars to fund the project to make up for TIF. So that's how you come to your local financial participation points, which is one of the key categories that sets developments apart in how communities get affordable housing tax credits awarded to their community. It's a highly competitive process, that's why this is, you know, huge, that this community has an award of affordable housing tax credits, so this development can move forward. It's highly competitive, so communities, I live in Madison, Wisconsin, they have five million dollars a year that they're putting towards affordable housing, because they know the need. The communities are competing for these tax credits.
And you cannot get a tax credit on this particular piece of the land without the abatement?
We have a commitment for the abatement, and that's what IACDA has seen.
And they will, they will do not?
There'd be a way to make it up, um, if we didn't get it, but it, you know, I just, you know, we were relying on it. Our investors have all underwritten the tax abatement. Again, there's a way to make it up. It also doesn't look good as if IACDA looks at a development, and they got a commitment of tax abatement, and then the tax abatement doesn't come through.
I feel like, if I could interrupt you, I apologize, and thank you, George, for yielding. I feel like we're kind of, questions are being asked, and answers are being given, but they're sort of passing each other enough here. And I, maybe I'm wrong, so I just want to ask what I hope is a clarifying question.
Sure.
And that is that, it's my understanding that to get these tax credits, communities, or projects wherever they might be in, in Indiana, have to come up with a, an amount of local investment. That could come from a TIF district, it could come from some other local homes project, that was community money, it can come from a tax abatement.
Correct.
It can come from a number of things. And depending on the community and what's available there, and what you've been able to find available there, you might put together something that looks different. And when you came here, what was available was not maybe as expansive as it is in some other places. And one of the things that you could identify that was available was a potential tax abatement. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement, but I'll also say, maybe one of the reasons why we're talking past each other is, it's also a complicated formula. It's possible that a community could score off the charts, there's all these different census tracts, depending on what county you're on, the state is targeting different areas. And it is possible that, I've never seen any projects get awarded without some level of commitment, but it is possible that a project could get awarded tax credits without local commitment. But it would have to score off the charts in every single, I don't even know how many categories there are, thirty different categories. If you magically align, so it's a little bit more complicated than just saying, yes, you need it, because it's possible that a project could get, I'm trying, you know, it's a very complicated matrix of how to get a development that's, it comes down to scoring, it comes down to fractions of a point. The first time we applied for this project, we lost in a tiebreaker. So, these developments, I think, the year we got funded, we, I think, had, beat the next project out by like a half a point. So it's, that commitment is what gets you over the edge. We needed every dollar that we had committed to us, or to get the, if that answer, on this project, we needed every dollar that we had committed. And if we lost any of those dollars, we have to make them up. Hopefully that answers your question, Mr. Hayes.
Kinda. On these local contractors, are you telling me that these are the only bids you're getting, or you're also getting bids from those that are not local?
Of course, we're getting bids from people that aren't local.
So this is not a set in stone, this is just people that you know?
Those are people that we are fully committed to working with, and I, we're working towards finalizing contracts with them. Those are people that have given us competitive bids, and we're committed to working with them. So, you know, it's, until we have our final financing, we can't sign a contract with them, so.
I understand. My, uh.
Some of them are still working on numbers, and so, as Richard alluded to, value engineering for this project, sometimes we do design-build. For this project, we did full mechanical drawings. So, you know, BNS is going back to the drawing board, saying, hey, if you, if you move your, if you move your heating system here, we can save, you know, so much if, you know, it's, if you have your vents running this way, and we have to work back and forth with them, it's complicated, too, because it's a historic project, so you can't just have your ducts running every which way, we have to make sure they meet the historic guidelines. You can't have ducts running next to windows, so it's, it's some back and forth and working closely with them. But I, all those contractors will tell you, we're working closely with them, and we're committed to working with them. We wouldn't be having so much back and forth if we weren't committed to working with them. I wouldn't be standing up here, and we wouldn't be giving you that list if we weren't serious about working with those contractors.
I just, in my, and this is a personal opinion of mine, of course, I don't want to see any historic building torn down. I just feel like, in the whole scheme of things that are happening downtown, that my belief is that there's something that would fit this location better than what's being proposed. I believe this, this location is extremely valuable. I, I do not see, and I know you're talking about, it's been there for thirteen years, and I understand that, but just within the last year, year and a half, things have started to develop and progress in the downtown area, and I just feel like that's what's gonna happen with this particular piece of property. Again, my own personal opinion, I yield.
To address that, because that's, that's kind of been out there in discussions this last couple of months. And because of that, I went to one of the owners, who I don't know very well, except for by reputation. And he is a, I don't know what the technical term is, a lover of old buildings. And he, for, it's my understanding, and from my conversation with him, this building will not be torn down. We'll have to have a few funerals before this building's torn down. So it kind of goes back to the best use. You know, if they were to sell it, and somebody tear it down, that's possible, but under the current, you can't make somebody do something with their property they don't want to, as long as they're following the law, and they're following the law. So the owners have gone down this path, and what's, uh, this is a very technical legal term, but what's awesome about this is, you know, someone could have done this, you know, is this a fair playing field? Absolutely. Any one of us could have done this project at any time, and put all these pieces together. None of us did. Colinra, from Wisconsin, somehow got wind of this building, came down, looked at it, and still thought, this is a great project. Went out, bought all this money, they're bringing in just on the tax, eight point five million dollars of out-of-town money. And keep in mind, we just lost eight million to the border wall from the one hundred and eighty-first, if all the reports are correct. So we just lost eight million dollars that's gonna come in from the government for a local project we just lost. Now we have eight point five million coming in, and for what's it gonna cost us? Whatever that little bit amount on the abatement is, will probably make up in local income tax and food beverage, because we're gonna have all these workers for a year working downtown, and going in and eating at local places. Uh, I eat at a local establishment every Friday, Wise Spies. And, uh, and I'm amazed by the amount of construction workers in there every day. And I, now with this project, again, however many there are gonna be, that's another year of people working downtown and supporting our local establishments. And again, just a tax credit alone, eight point five million dollars divided up between Lee Company, Crown Electric, either BNS Plumbing or Freitag Reinhardt, Dennis Trucking, Builders First Source, Strode Construction, Floor and America, Clear Choice Painting, again, BNS Plumbing or Freitag, L&amp;W Supply, Summit Steel, Missville Enterprises, Low Brothers, and Ace Appliance. That eight five, eight point five million's coming from somewhere else, and is gonna affect this list. And don't forget the forty families. It's that simple. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I had, I had one more, has the redevelopment commission voted on the TIF?
They have not.
Okay.
They're waiting on this.
I just had a couple of comments, I, I've, I had a call this afternoon from one of the owners, who was in transit out of town. He's gonna be here tonight, one of the owners of the real property, who conveyed to me his concern that this building would be empty for a lot longer if this project didn't go through. And I remember sitting in Crossroads Cafe when the electrical workers were going into the old terror hood house to unhook the electricity so it could safely be demolished, saying, you can't imagine how awful that building is. And I don't think it could have been saved at this point. Maybe sometime twenty years earlier, it could have been, at this point, it couldn't. That what had happened inside that building was so severe. So I, I feel pretty strongly that this is our shot at saving this building. And that there, whether it should have could have, there might be another project that would be great to go in there, but there's nobody stepping up to do it. And, um, so I, I feel really strong that this is our shot, and that we should take it, so.
That's true. You know, I've been back for nineteen years, and I've seen how downtown's grown. If that terror house is still sitting there, you wouldn't have two hotels. You wouldn't have a children's museum. And who knows what else we wouldn't have? You know, what's this, what's the redevelopment of this, the YMCA gonna, what's that gonna springboard in that area? It's, you know, I know it's all downtown, but there's a big difference between Seventh and Wall Bash and Sixth and Poplar. And, you know, who knows what ten million dollar investment that building is gonna spur in the surrounding area? So for that, unless you have any other questions, I would, uh, Commonwealth would appreciate your support in allowing them to move forward to the next meeting.
So, so when did this first come out to this group? June, did I hear Kevin say June?
I feel like I've been here every month for a while on this. I don't, I don't know when we first came.
This, this action?
Well, for the tenure, I think in June.
Okay.
And then, it was approved, the first meeting is approved, six-three. And then we came back a month later in July, and it was denied, four-five.
And now it's September twelve, and now I think we finally may have the numbers right, in terms of what the tax is and what the abated tax should be. Okay. And I say that based upon, if we've been here, you know, over three months dealing with that, I'd like a little more time to think about it, now that I got the right numbers.
Yield. I yield. If we adopt it tonight, you'll have a month, because it has to come back for confirmation a month later.
I'm sorry, Todd said I did.
If we adopt it tonight, then you'll have a month to go over the numbers, because we have to come back.
This is one that has to be revised.
It's, yeah, that's the way that all the tax abatements work.
I primarily wanted on this for financial issues and these other things. I struggle with, as you well know, I struggle with, and I apologize for that, I'm trying to do better. I hear you. Okay.
Well, and to that end, if there are no further questions, I move that we adopt Resolution eleven, two thousand and nineteen.
Senator. It's been moved by Councilperson Nation, and seconded by Councilperson DeBonne, that we adopt Resolution eleven, two thousand and nineteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
No.
Sorry, I just want to confirm, Councilperson Aller, Councilman Azar, and Councilperson Nassar.
Passed.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item of business.
I lost my agenda.
It's going around tonight.
Special Ordinance twenty-one, two thousand and nineteen, rezoning this property located at twenty-nine eighteen, twenty-nine thirty, and twenty-nine forty Harding Avenue, and twenty-nine forty-one South Third Street, area planning gave a favorable recommendation with conditions.
It's the Richard Shagley Espers Show tonight, I just want to note that the boy scouts did not come back. Okay, excuse me, excuse me, here's a request to take a very short break.
As I'm sure you're all aware, this probably goes without saying, but tomorrow's my birthday, and I assume that's why you had this meeting tonight, just for me, for that. For our grateful?
Yes, I said we're gonna take a very short break.
Okay, so we're.
Yes, we're gonna take a very short break. Hey, we are back in session, and we are, um, about here from petitioner on Special Ordinance twenty-one, two thousand and nineteen.
Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley, I'm here tonight representing the petitioners Milton Derrickson and Sharon Derrickson. As you may recall, I was here last week, they're attempting to rezone two pieces of property, basically, separated by an alley. There's several lots on Harding Street, that's currently R one, and then there's a bigger piece that faces Third Street, that's a C six. As you may recall, this is the former Texas Roadhouse piece of property. It was a lease deal, Texas Roadhouse had the building up front, they used the back for parking. I don't know how, this is before me, I don't know how it worked out, because they were, uh, illegal is probably not much, but they were using the R one piece of the property for parking. As you may or may not know, Texas Roadhouse changed hands. The new owners wanted to own their land, not lease. The petitioner and the new owner of Texas Roadhouse couldn't come to terms. So Texas Roadhouse bought the Apple House, and Apple House moved their operation further off Third Street. The petitioner has been contacted by a potential buyer. For originally, as you may recall, originally, the request was, I was, I was asked to get it rezoned for Hotel Bar Restaurant. In talking area plan, they suggested the C three. So we filed the rezoning at C three. At the last meeting, there was some discussion on the site plan. And the problem we have is, we really don't have any information, because we don't even have a signed deal, because they want to know if they can even do it. And to do the site plan, especially the site plan that was suggested by the staff of the area planning office, would require considerable investment, without the knowledge of whether that's gonna be approved.
And as far as the C to C, go on the prior. I'm trying to clarify that, I thought George, Councilperson Azar asked a good question.
I don't know if a restaurant works in a, in a C six. Well, that doesn't solve the problem of the back lots. So we would still need to.
So, we would still need to rezone the back lots for the potential buyers, so they could legally use the lots on Harding, whether for the building or for parking. And I, and I tried to clarify in the email, you know, the, to divulge who your potential buyer is and project prior to locking it down invites a lot of potential problems. If I were to stand up here and say XYZ franchise wants to build a whatever restaurant, by not having it locked down, and once that's announced, you know, you could have realtors calling the company saying, hey, that's a nice spot, I got a really good spot for you. Or developers calling saying, hey, you know, that's, have you looked at this spot? Builders, hey, I'd love to build that for you. And to avoid all that, you simply say nothing, because until you're, it's a go, it just avoids harassment. You know, you saw that in the, the abate. Once the, application for tax credit and approval for tax credit, and it was known, they received unsolicited requests to help from companies all over the state and surrounding states, because they knew of the potential. And I think the potential buyer in this case wants to avoid that as long as they can. So, that's why, unfortunately, I can't tell you as much as you would like to know based on our previous meeting, and why I can't provide to you a site plan with the detail that the area planning commission requested. With that being said, I would welcome any questions you have regarding this rezoning.
Public, is there anyone for the public who likes to give us? I am sorry. Thank you, Councilman Azar.
For thanking the public for staying.
Donald Hyde, and this is possibly the most incredible night with two extremes for you to decide. And you've already decided one, and I hope my comments will make you think and look into the other potential use of the YMCA building. Reason I mean extreme is you've got one building that one person's finally showing interest in, and possibly, if they can wait a while, another group might show an interest in. I assure you, the land you're talking about now, and we know this right now, this land is location, location. There's going to be people lined up down the road. They're going to be arguing about who gets it, and they're going to pay a lot more money to get this land, because it's going to be location, location. Whoever gets this land is going to have a business that's going to last 40, 50 years, if they manage it right. This is, so you've got to be real careful who you let get this building, because they could put anything in there they want. And I'm going to tell you right now, 3rd Street and Margaret, where this building's located at, by the highways, we're going to, if this mall goes through and the diagonal corner holders pass on the casino, and I, I think it's 50/50, and it's probably going to lean more toward them passing it, two years from now, that land's going to be worth even more money. The reason they're wanting to get this done now is because a lot of that land, from Margaret all the way to 46, and all the way across to where the mall sits now, all that land's going to be sold in the next three years. It's going to be developed. And if you don't take my word for it, just live long enough, you'll see it with your own eyes. So, you've got to be real careful what you're putting in there. That's all I'm saying, guys. That end.
Anyone else in the public who'd like to speak? Counselor?
I have just a couple of questions, and I, I can understand why you don't want to reveal who, who it is. I, I don't have a problem with that. You're saying, my problem was, the last meeting was a hotel, restaurant, or bar, and now you're saying possible restaurant, is that correct?
Yeah, so, I don't know if I said this out in the meeting or not, but I was originally contacted, contacted by the petitioner, and he said, he asked, what do we have to do if we want to put a bar, a restaurant, a hotel in that spot? Which is kind of a broad... So, I went to the area planning office to consult, to make sure I was on the right page, and the C3 was the, the way to go. So, that's why I filed for the C3. After last week's meeting, in speaking with the petitioner, I told him, I said, listen, I can't go back next week without something. I need something, because I, you asked for more details, Todd asked for some more details. And he said, let me talk to the, I don't know if he said the agent or the buyer, and he called back and said, restaurant. Now, the tricky part is, as you pointed out, you can still do that in the C6, it doesn't fix the back part, but also, I think in the C3, the C6 is kind of limited on size versus the C3 is a little more friendly on the sides you could go.
And we're talking, the front part, where Texas Roadhouse was, is a C3?
C6.
I'm sorry, C6, you want, you want that as C3?
And...
And the back part was residential, and they used that as parking?
Yeah.
All this time without any rezoning? Okay. So, basically, we're really just talking about, nothing much is changing in the front.
No.
The only thing that's going to change is you're going to really now...
Legally.
Legally have parking in the back. And I was, I apologize, because I was under the impression it was going from a C3 to a C6. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I had it backwards. So, I yield.
Could you just make the back parking lot the C6?
The C3. C3.
As it sits right now, it's a C6, right?
No, the back is R1, the front C6.
Right. So, if you made the back from an R1 to a C6, that would work for a restaurant, too, with parking?
It would, in theory, it'd work. There's, like I said, there's some size between the Cs, there's a size of the building that comes into play, and setbacks. And I apologize for not having all that memorized. I'm, in theory, you could do that, but it might be a little restrictive. And the other, the other concern is, you kind of want to strike when the iron's hot. And any delay could, any delay could create a distraction, and it goes somewhere else to decide they don't even want to mess with it. So, and by doing the C6, if I go on C6, C6 instead of C3, C3, it would be, we'd have to advertise, we'd have to file again, it'd be another two months.
And I understand that, but what I'm saying is, as a three, C3, there's a lot more options you have to put in there, if they decide, all of a sudden, they don't want a restaurant.
Right.
Because I have to look at it as, I am zoning this property, and even if I had a, a visual site plan here, and they told me it was a restaurant, they could still change it.
Oh, absolutely.
And they could put in an adult book store in their C3?
Uh, yeah, I don't think you'd do that in a C3.
Yes, yes.
You can do it, okay, well, the other thing you've got to keep in mind is, that would be an expensive adult bookstore, because the land's...
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I have to look at what all the possibilities, under a C3, what you can put there.
Yeah.
And without having a solid plan in front of me, to say, hey, yes, this definitely is a restaurant, and you're going to a C3, which has got a lot of different stuff that it could be in there, that's just the only thing, I mean, I'd love to see this property developed. It's in my district, and I'm all for development.
They could, they could land in high-traffic areas isn't appealing.
Right. But my thing is, if it is going to be a restaurant, I would rather see those back lots go as a C6, the same as the front building, and it could still be a restaurant, it could still have the parking, and everything would work. I yield.
Just a, just a point of clarification, what has, and I had the paper, and I forgot to bring it, what has the most flexibility, a C6 or a C3?
Wow, now you want an opinion?
Well, I, I thought when I...
Because I think there is, there are opportunities in both zoning classifications, while C6 may list more, they're usually smaller. I'll just read you the titles of a C6. I'm sorry, C3 is Regional Commerce District, okay? And it talks about, there is no limitation placed upon the maximum size obtainable of any store, but I also didn't see anything in a C6 that was, but I'm on my phone, and that's harder in heck to read.
I thought for some reason, C6 was 5,000 square feet.
C2 and C1 are.
Well, the C6 says you have to go by C, like it says, you can do anything that is permitted by C1, maybe, which is the 5,000, or C2 is 5,000.
But you can have a bank, you can have a barber shop, a camera shop. So, I'm just saying for clarification, because we're only going by phone, and Mr. Shagley may be completely right, you may want to just seek clarification.
Are you, are you saying, I saw the floor. Are you saying that you, that your, the Derricksons that own this property have a buyer, if this is rezoned to C3?
Correct.
And the buyer would like to put a restaurant?
That's my understanding, yes.
That's what you're saying?
I've already talked to the petitioner, and that's why I've been told by the petitioner.
Okay, on the record, you're saying that.
That's, that's, yeah.
Okay. I yield.
I'll admit, I share the same concern that Councilwoman Oller does. I, I don't know, I, I know you're telling us it's going to be a restaurant, but a C3 allows for more than that, and, and I tend to think that rezoning the back lot to a C6, it would make me feel more comfortable, honestly. Those are just my thoughts. I, I yield.
Madam President, first, Richard, thanks for being responsive to us, to our concerns that were expressed last week. Didn't you just, or didn't you say at the beginning of your presentation tonight that your first stop was area planning, and after talking with them, you came up with the request that's before us? I, to me, I think that's a relevant piece of information, especially when I go and look at, at, at the actual property. Building's been torn down, parking lots are in the back, have always been illegal. They're trying to figure out how to get it all, get the property all legal, so they can convey it to somebody else. I realize that I came on strong last week about the lack of a site plan, and I still feel that that's an important part of all of this process. But that said, I understand why you're not, why you're not in a position to share it this time. And for the purposes of tonight's meeting, if there's no further discussion, I move that we, that we pass Special Ordinance Number 21, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nation and seconded by Councilperson Nassar, that we approve Special Ordinance 21, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, I believe that was, was that Council, I'm sorry, Councilperson Oller, Councilperson DeBon, Councilperson Elliott? Yes.
So, that is five yes, three no.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any other business?
I move to go to bed. I move to adjourn.
It's moved, it's seconded, there were adjournments, all those in favor, say aye.
As a birthday present, could I get the...